Welcome to the June 13, 2022 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Waddington, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting this evening, with the ongoing gun violence and families battling inflation, we ask to give our leaders the wisdom to guide us on decisions. Help us protect the poor and those struggling during these difficult times. Provide for their needs and give them hope. Encourage those who have enough to share the essential resources. Amen.
Amen. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Murray, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
I'll ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Harris from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and second discussion? Mr. Murray, you call and rule on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris is excused. Commissioner, do you have before the minutes of our meeting of May the 23rd, 2022? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali?
I move that we accept the minutes of the May 23 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, share with us your name and address, and tell us your agenda comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Commission staff, 362 Sheffield Way. Two issues I'd like to ask questions on. First one is item A, which is a Brownsville grant, and the question would be, is there a committee set up for that? And if the committee, if there is one, is that open to the public, as it has been in the past? I know a few years ago, they actually had a city committee of maybe 10 people that would meet once every couple of weeks and go over different projects that would be eligible for this grant. The second item is item R, which is a new scooter business that is located to, I presume, downtown Sandusky. And in the past, and we're not the only city that's having this problem, other cities that have scooters in their downtown area, there's an issue with riders just leaving the scooters in the middle of the sidewalk and the public got right of ways. And I'm wondering if there's going to be any kind of oversight with this new scooter business as far as making sure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Additional questions regarding the agenda?
I'm Mike McCall. I'm the Executive Director of Ireland's Habitat for Humanity. Today, we are in the position to purchase a pair of lots on Harrison Street from the Sandusky Land Bank, and I just want to thank the Commission and the Land Bank Department for their cooperation on this matter. We plan to build Habitat House Number 112 on that property. About half of our property built houses have been built in Sandusky, the other half in here in County. This property, the family that's going to get Angela Martin, she has six kids, so it is going to be a five-bedroom, two-bath house. The first one we've built in about five years. And the other unique item about this is I've already been working with the chapel church. They're going to build, they frame the house on their, in their parking lot, August 20th. So we hope to break ground in early August and then complete the house before the end of the year. So by allowing us to purchase this land, we'll have a brand-new house on Harrison Street, hopefully before the end of the year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. You and your organization certainly provide a vital service to this community, not just Sandusky, but the entire, entire community. Thank you for what you do, making a meaningful impact on our society.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions regarding agenda items from the ayes? Seeing no one else rush to the podium, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. It's my pleasure to read into the record a proclamation for Linda Mitchell, the director of Safe Harbor, who passed away a few weeks ago. The impact that this woman had on so many lives and in turn, our community will never really be able to be accurately measured. She steadfastly shunned any publicity for herself and for the organization, as anonymity is so critical to their mission. We offer this proclamation to honor her contributions and to raise the awareness of the need in our society for the services that they offer. As much as this is a tribute to Linda Mitchell's life, we hope that she would approve of our effort to make our residents more aware of the impact that Safe Harbor continues to have on our community. Whereas the City of Sandusky has recognized its citizens for improving relations and the quality of living among the diverse members of this community, and Linda Louise Nino Mitchell is one of those citizens deserving recognition. And whereas Linda Mitchell, who called Sandusky, Ohio her lifelong home since 1943, had been employed at the Sandusky Safe Harbor Domestic Shelter since 1991, and as the Executive Director since the year 2000, Linda had the faculty to intervene in dangerous situations to help the vulnerable and restore hope to the traumatized, and has served as a beacon of light and a hope for the victims of domestic violence in Huron, Erie, and Ottawa Counties. And whereas the Safe Harbor Domestic Violence Shelter has become a first-response program cooperating with local law enforcement agencies responding to victims and their children, providing a safe haven for clients and their children with temporary housing and essentials to transition from a fearful situation into a fearless one at no cost to the clients. And whereas Linda and her staff provide counseling, whether it be short-term crisis intervention, education, and case management or outreach counseling provided at a confidential off-site location. And whereas, along with others, Linda built up Safe Harbor as the area's only certified facility to directly protect, advocate for victims in criminal or civil court, and empower those abused, a majority being women. And whereas Linda and the staff of the shelter provide support groups for those that have been or are now in abusive relationships looking to make changes in their lives, Linda personally helped thousands of victims during their weakest and most vulnerable periods. Whereas Linda organized annual fundraisers such as Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, since 2015, participated in the Grease and Glamour event since 2012, created an annual women's retreat focused on self-healing. Her efforts given tirelessly to raise funds for Safe Harbor and the people it serves. And whereas Linda is survived by her husband and best friend, William Knowlton, children Marcy Lynn Corwin, Mary Marshad's stepsons Lance and Eric Knowlton, and numerous family members. And whereas Linda ensured that when her tenure as Executive Director ended, that Safe Harbor will have the ongoing support and dedication from staff to continue her selfless and generous work for victims and survivors of domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, I, Richard Brady, President of the City Commission of Sandusky, do hereby proclaim recognition Linda Louise Nino Mitchell for outstanding contributions to this community dated this 13th day of June 2022. I know there's some friends and relatives here of Ms. Mitchell, if you'd like to come forward, we'd love to provide you with this proclamation and perhaps get a picture.
Thank you. Just one picture. Yeah.
Next on the agenda, we have a swearing-in of Captain Zimmerman and her newest partner, Firefighter. Mr. Brooks, are you going to do those honors?
Yes, I am.
And Chief will provide some remarks also.
Does he repeat the whole?
Yes.
Yes.
I will recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Jacob Taylor, recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duty constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, and the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me. Congratulations.
Just a little bit about Jacob. Jacob lives in Amherst right now. For the past few years, he's volunteered for the Amherst Fire Department and worked on his family farm called The Learning Farm. He's an EMT who's enrolled in medic school. He's supposed to start in August, and he's going to be on number-two shift under the direction of Captain Matt Lesh. Congratulations.
Same thing. I will honor the two pages right here. I, Peter Zimmerman, recognize my fundamental duty as captain of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Pete Zimmerman, recognize my fundamental duty as captain of the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a captain of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain captain of the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good before my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
Congratulations.
Pete Zimmerman has been a member of Sandusky Fire Department since March 23, 1998. As he knows, that's one day less than me. He was promoted to Lieutenant in 2012, and he's had a very productive career at SFD. He was instrumental in modernizing our run cards, which document every street in the city. These run cards enable fire crews to quickly and efficiently traverse the city in emergency. He's managed and maintained a breathing apparatus stock for well over a decade, and he's helped design more than one of the engines that we currently use. He's an instructor at E. Hovey, training future firefighters in our area, and has a wealth of knowledge that he's constantly sharing with younger members. He'll be a captain on number-two shift under the direction of Shift Commander Matt Lesh. Pete has been a huge asset to the Sandusky Fire Department thus far in his career, and there's no doubt that he will continue to be a huge asset as he moves forward in his leadership role as captain. Congratulations, Captain Zimmerman.
I usually take a moment now to explain to our recipients that there's no need for them to sit through this entire meeting now that their part is done, but with this group, I don't even need to tell you that. I think you guys know that. Commissioner Murray.
I will note that the swearing-in process has gotten a lot easier. The individual swearing-in, when Mr. Webster was new, he would break twice and then not give them a copy. This is much better than swearing.
I'm getting there.
Question is, who's going to stumble first?
Well, it was a memory test.
Yeah. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of 709 Perry Street will be conducted by our chief planner, Aaron Blair.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady. So I'm here to open a public hearing for the rezoning for parcel 5704215.000, also known as 709 Perry Street. The rezoning in front of you is to change this parcel from residential to family to RRB residential business. At the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission, held on April 27, they recommended approval of this rezoning. The primary discussion for approval considered two primary pieces of conversation. The majority of the existing commercial zoning on the same block as this parcel is primarily RRB and Commercial Services CS, so it is contiguous with that, and it is appropriate allowing commercial uses on this parcel in relation to its neighbors and the commercial nature of Monroe Street as a corridor in the city. So the Planning Commission recommended approval at that meeting, and this is the public hearing to consider the rezoning at the commission.
Comments or questions for Ms. Blair, Commissioner? And this is a public hearing, comments or questions from residents?
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Just an observation, what was not mentioned here in this presentation, and I don't know if you all watched the Planning Commission meetings or not, but the purpose for rezoning this is obviously for an Airbnb, and this just kind of highlights how the Airbnb issue is starting to take off like a wildfire. I think a month or so ago, or it's in the process of approving another location across the street from this property as an Airbnb. So we're starting to see, you know, once people find out how much money they can make on Airbnb, that it's just like, it's just going to keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I know the Planning Commission and staff, they're working on, you know, some kind of legislation, but it probably should have been done like four years ago. So the sooner the better.
Ms. Blair, interestingly enough, I'm sure there's a reason for this, that perhaps didn't drill down far enough into the, into the meeting minutes of the commission, but we have in place a overlay district opportunity for people that wish for this, but instead, we're moving towards a zoning change. Can you give us some reasoning for that?
Yes, thank you for the question, Commissioner President. It's interesting, we have the overlaid zone, we have the overlaid district that allows transient rental. We also have six other zoning districts that allow transient rental. In this case, it didn't make sense for trying to establish an overlay district within one single parcel when the applicant originally called with the idea of, hey, I'd like to do transient rental at this specific parcel. We do get a lot of phone calls about that. As the resident mentioned, Mr. Schwanger mentioned, that we are working with planning commissioners to take a look at our existing legislation, which we do have in place, which contains a lot of best practices for regulating transient rental nationwide. So we're doing a good job so far, and it absolutely requires our attention to continue moving forward because we see a lot of that interest. In this specific case, when you look at a rezoning, you're not necessarily looking at what this particular applicant wants to do today with his property. That's one part of the conversation. We're looking at a rezoning, we're looking, is this zoning category that's being proposed appropriate in context with the larger district? So in this case, we focus the conversation on, is it appropriate to have RRB at this parcel? And because of its proximity to Monroe Street, because of the proximity of the Commercial Services within the center of that block, if you look at the block, all of it is dark red in the center, and then it has RRB all the way around, and that's why the Planning Division supported the rezoning in this case. It is true that the applicant stated that he intends to use it for a transient rental property.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the public or from commissions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I will weigh in on the subject just a little bit, looking forward to what the legislation is it might ultimately look like. I think we run a risk, and I think, I will vote in favor of this legislation because I think the way it was approached is entirely proper. It's a question of how do you zone this property relative to its neighbors, and I'm satisfied with the answer here. But I do think we run a longer-term risk as a community of our particular nature of too much gentrification and making properties here ultimately unaffordable for existing residents and retirees. So it will be really important that we figure out a way to, to support some transient rental, but also make sure that it's appropriately regulated and have oversight nearby. There are ways to do that, there are things that I think are coming into the conversation. The question of how cities regulate Airbnbs going forward is still coming into focus. And, you know, we don't know what best practices are right now, I think, compared to what we're going to know in a couple of years. Obviously, we only know today what we can know. I would urge some caution in moving too quickly because this is an evolving area, and I think we want to make sure that we don't go too far, and we get to the point where we can't rein it all back in. So I'm looking forward to the conversation, recognize it's going on nationwide, but do urge some caution so that, you know, we have cops on the beat, not literally SPD, but nearby to make sure that these properties are being used appropriately. So thank you for allowing me to make the comment.
Additional comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Phil.
During the Planning Commission meeting, I was the only one that voted no relative to this property, and I voted no because I think that we should have our procedures and guidelines in place before we just start approving Airbnbs here and there. So I'll be voting no again tonight, just to stay consistent, and we'll see what happens when we bring those guidelines forward. Because I think maybe we're looking to address these types of, these types of issues where somebody comes with a, with a house in the middle of the block, so.
And as, as our liaison to the Planning Commission, I know that you will play a significant role in us moving forward with that, and I appreciate your leadership. I believe I did attend the Planning Commission where you suggested that perhaps now is the time for a review of our existing regulations, so I appreciate your leadership on that.
Yes, and staff has provided a lot of support. In fact, we're going to meet later on this week, so. But, you know, they're, they've got newer planning ideas, and I recognize that, and I appreciate that.
Stay tuned. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I also, I look forward to the reviews that's being done by the Planning Commission, and I agree with both Mr. Murray and Commissioner Pajali. This particular zoning change, I watched the meeting, and I would have agreed that the zoning change was correct, was appropriate, and I didn't have any problem with that. I do have some concern about the, that we rezoned, just found a way around the, what I consider found a way around our Airbnb law, and just found another way to, to permit this Airbnb. And, and that's my only concern, but the zoning change is something I would have approved otherwise. I just don't like working around it. I certainly hope that as Planning Commission looks at this, that the, they give full credit to the integrity of the neighborhoods as they are now. What I've seen up to now and listened to, my observations, we seem to always have a, this is from listening to the conversations in where said at Planning Commission meetings about these in terms of the questions they ask, this is, let's figure out a way to justify this. And unless there's enough to justify it Airbnb, and unless there's enough community outrage at the meeting, it tends to be the conversation toward less emphasis on the thoughts, needs of the neighborhood in question, and more on the rights of someone that may or may not live here to make money. So I just want to put that out there for you folks to get, give some thought to, that the existing zoning for those people who bought their homes at the time they did, that's what the zoning was, and you are instituting, were putting something in there that wasn't there before, and they didn't bargain for that. And so I think we, we need to give them full, full credit, faith, and lean in their direction. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I think that's the law director. I may be wrong, was it House Bill 66, and it passed in one side down at the State House? The other side passes, would we still have home rule if they say it's wide open? Is there anything we can do? Does the City of Sandusky have home rule then? Didn't it pass on the House side and the state side?
So there is pending legislation regarding transient rental.
Yeah, I read.
Yeah. To answer your question, Commissioner Waddington, the bill is designed to overrule local regulations. I would argue that yes, our home rule authority would trump that, but it would be an open question, and the way courts have recently looked at home rule is not very favorable to cities. So there is some risk that there might become some conflict between any regulations that we pose and the state law. I know that isn't a super clear answer, but until a court like fully decides that specific issue, it might be, I guess the way to put it is, it is a little bit of an open question. But traditionally, this would be a, a area of local concern, as it is specifically local planning and zoning, which is built around our health and safety obligations where our home rule authority is the strongest.
Additional questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I don't want to be the lone commissioner out. I like to address, Mr. Murray brought up gentrification. I'm not that concerned about gentrification yet because when the exodus of all the middle-class people and working-class people left town, nobody raised a stink. So I wouldn't mind bringing some more working-class people and income-producing properties to town. To address Mr. Schwanger, I would say that it is not a passive income, it is hard work. I was the first house, I bought a house, and I was the first one to get zoned in the city appropriately for Airbnb, and it's, it's a lot of work. It takes communication, day and night, it takes, you have to be close to, to keep, keep it regulated, you have to keep it clean. It is not a big moneymaker. So I believe that what he, Mr. Schwanger thinks, other people think that. They're just buying these properties, thinking instead of renting Section 8, I'm going to make an Airbnb. Well, that, it isn't going to work that way. So there's, there's some, something in the middle. So I'm So I'm going to go with Mr. Pajali, he's on the planning commission, I haven't had a chance to communicate with him, but I'd rather see districts and parameters set in place before we just spot zone different houses. And I don't even know, I don't even, I didn't look at this house, it might be really appropriate, might be really nice, but it's just my feeling. We can't run around the city and think that, spot zone this, spot zone that, you know, and some guy lives in Cleveland, bought a house, thinks, thinks he's going to make a lot of money on it, you know? He's not, and not do a good job, I should say. Because you're going to have to have somebody there 24/7, better go over there at 1:00 in the morning when the noise is getting loud and calm them down, or the police are going to have to come, and you're going to meet them. So you can't let that happen in, in residential neighborhoods. That's it.
Additional comments or questions from the public or from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to transient housing, I just think for you approve or deny something, you ought to have some sort of guidelines, concrete guidelines in place so in the future when somebody comes and they make the same request, they're not saying, well, you did it over here, or you did it over there. That, that's my concern.
Mr. Chairman, I should just follow up. Yeah, I'm not against it at all. I wouldn't mind seeing it, because I mean, if, if a good owner is dedicated and wants to fix a home, fix a home up, a century home, in turn, it's great for the city. But there, there has to be some parameters in place before we start, because everybody's going to say, well, you did it, they did it, or you just, just my feelings.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul.
Just one last thing. I, I agree about parameters, and what matters is what these parameters are based upon. And the fundamental question for me is, will this benefit the neighborhood? Or will this simply benefit the owner of the property renting it at a higher rate for a season? And disrupt the neighborhood? Neighborhoods, it is obvious that people who live in, there is, are one, that it exists for a reason. These people bought homes here to live in this kind of an environment. We're about to change that, and we need to be careful where we do it. Where we do it because some folks can afford to just move. I'm talking about those that are already here, and I think if we look around and we have, if folks discuss this, you'll find that that does occur. And we don't want driving people out of neighborhoods that otherwise could be stable neighborhoods. Thanks.
I'm sure I don't have to remind any of you that we, we went through a painful process, I think three or four years ago, to develop an ordinance dealing with transient rental. And in this specific case, for what I believe are very good reasons, Ms. Blair has explained, we've not used the overlay concept, but we've done a zoning change to accommodate a person who wants to transient rental. So it is somewhat of a workaround, in, in my view. But I, again, I know I don't need to remind you that we have an ordinance on the books that deals with transient rental. Does it need to be looked at again? If, if planning commission is inundated with these types of requests, and you don't feel that you have a clear path forward with, on these issues, which it appears to do not, then this is an ordinance we need to revisit. And I'm counting on staff, and I'm counting on planning commission, you know, to do that and come back with us with some suggestions. But I think what I'm hearing from most commissioners is that what is sacrosanct is the neighborhood, is must protect, at all costs, we must protect our neighborhoods. They are, I've heard Commissioner Waddington say on more than a dozen occasions, they are the lifeblood of this community. And for us to turn our backs on, on those neighborhoods, that guy who bought his home 10, 20, 30 years ago, just raising his family there, should not have to wake up at 2:00 in the morning with a volleyball game going on next door. And, and I don't know how you're going to eventually deal with that. I don't see how you deal with it by putting caps on things, because caps work wonderfully as long as the transient rental home is not next to me. You see where I'm going with that? So I, I, I'm counting on you being creative and, and bringing us back something that we can all live with and that works. Additional comments or questions? Now that we'll consider this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a presentation by Bob England of Erie County Health Department on Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grants. Mr. England.
Commissioners. I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I want to, actually, the reason I'm here is two or threefold. I'm actually here to talk about the great partnerships we've had with the city of Sandusky, the Dorn Foundation, and some of our other partners in the city of Sandusky that has led to the success we've had with our Lead Hazard Control Program. Back in 2016, we applied for our first grant at the Health Department through HUD, and we successfully completed that, and we applied for another one. We're currently in our second grant, it's a $3.8 million grant, through the Housing and Urban Development Department, remove lead hazards from area homes, Erie County homes. And, but I can tell you, most of the work is done in the city of Sandusky. And it's just basically because of, most of the qualified applicants are found in the city of Sandusky, because the need is in the city of Sandusky. We have done the majority of work here, and we, to date, we've spent $860,000 locally in homes, in about 55 homes locally. We anticipate by the end of next year, we'll spend a total of $1.9 million. And that's bringing together federal, state, and local funds. Dorn Foundation has been very generous, and a lot of match dollars have come to play through the Dorn Foundation that have made a lot of projects go forward that otherwise wouldn't because they were too expensive, but the Dorn was there. So we've been very lucky in that respect. Recently, towards the end of 2021, we were awarded another grant, the Ohio Lead Safe Home Fund, $600,000, which we just began this year. It's going to allow us to do another 30 homes, probably in the city of Sandusky. I haven't seen many other areas kind of applying, the way we had the, the applications flow, they're coming from the city of Sandusky. And that source of funding is great because we don't have the caps that we have with the HUD funding. It's coming through HUD, but they've given them discretion to go a little higher, so some of those projects that are $30,000, maybe a little more than that, that have been sitting around for years, all of a sudden, we can move forward with those projects. Not saying that we would spend $30,000, but we're a lot closer to where we need to be. So that's great, and we're happy about the success, and we look forward to about 200 homes by the time we're done with this. We were recently funded this year at the beginning of 2022 with a Healthy Homes Production Grant, $1 million. Most of the work's going to be done in the city of Sandusky. We're projecting about 66 homes will receive funding to fix leaky roofs, plumbing issues, slips, trips, and falls issues within the home, or foundation issues. If there's a risk of structural collapse, we can address those issues as well. I can't count the number of times we've gone out to homes and we see decks that are unsafe. So we have the opportunity here to spend up to $10,000 on each property and address some of these hazards. We're also making sure we take out permits. We're to make sure we have the oversight locally, and the work that we have done is safe, and it meets the current code requirements within the city of Sandusky and statewide. So that's great. Where are we going from here? Down the road, we're looking for more lead funds. We are applying for a second grant this year, and we're hoping to apply for another $3 million. At the Health Department, we've been increasing our capacity to do the work. We've taken our staff from two to six. Next year, I'm hopeful we're going to take that to 10. My hope is that we're going to have the capacity to manage these grants, but I know we will because we're dedicated to this, and this is something we're committing funds behind, we're committing the training dollars behind as well. But we'll need to do it if we want to spend the money locally and get it done. The other thing we need are, is local contractors. We've had a consistent number of contractors for years, about six, local lead hazard control contractors. But now we've got the Healthy Homes Grant, we don't want to steal contractors for that program to, to the detriment of the other program. So we're investing in local contractors. If you want to be a lead abatement contractor, we'll send you to school. We'll get you trained, we'll incentivize you to do it. If we need to support you, we'll look for creative ways we can do that so we can get local contractors trained so they could work in our program, we can do the work right here in Sandusky and Erie County. But that's where we're going down the road. We're also looking for funds for older adult home modifications, looking at a million dollar grant this year to do the same thing, targeting homes with elder adults to keep them in their homes. How much money can we spend there? Approximately $10,000, but the goal is to put in implements and to make the home safe so they can remain in their home, in their golden years as long as they can. So those funds, I'm very optimistic that if we apply, we've got the track record that, knock on wood, I hope we, I'll come back in a year and I'll say we're moving forward with these programs. So looking forward, I can have to actually speak to our partnership with the Housing Department and working with the Planning Department, Nicole Groey and Jonathan here, they've been great. They help us with our environmental reviews, which we have to do with every single project. They have the expertise and we get it done. That's actually on the agenda tonight, to extend that work that you guys have been partnering with us on, and help us with Healthy Homes work so we can cross all our Ts and dot all our Is. Nicole gets it done for us, we really appreciate that. So that's pretty much all I have. I can tell you, there's a lot of good things happening in the city of Sandusky, and one of them is the work we're prioritizing towards lead. This is going to be something you're going to hear more and more about, and I hope we're going to have some, the growth necessary where we can do what I envision we will over the next few years.
Thank you, Mr. England. Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I know a lot of that money comes to Sandusky because of the older stock. We have the homes are so older, majority of them are older. But I help out the Kids Fest every year. A few years back, you probably remember, we tested kids for.
Yes.
That was the last thing you brought up. To me, that's the most important. They were kids from Sandusky City Schools. Has there been any follow-up?
Oh, yeah. We followed up.
We had, what, was it like 75%? Three out of four kids say.
88% had some sort of lead exposure, yes.
And the blood, it was blood work, right?
It was blood, lead sticks. It's kind of a crude way of testing, especially at a fair, but it's an indicator. It's the kind of thing that gives you pause when 88% of the kids who are being tested have some level of lead exposure. They're not being lead poisoned, the vast majority of them, thank God, but they're being exposed. And the question is, a week from now, a month from now, a year from now, will they be overexposed? And will there be detrimental effects to their health? So has there been follow-up? Yes. All of those individuals that were tested, and the testing that's ongoing at the Health Department, I can tell you, we have events quarterly where we're working with different groups that deal with children and testing children. I think annually, we're testing about 200 kids. And we follow up on all those kids, and they are routed to one of our programs so we can get them the help they need and protect them within their home.
That affects your education too, a lot of mark.
It can. It can, if it goes untreated. If children who have exposures at or above 10 micrograms per deciliter of blood are lead poisoned. The kids, we see the vast majority of kids that if they have an exposure, it's between five and nine. That's our window of opportunity to make sure they don't have the detrimental effects. But I can tell you, it's many times these things go misdiagnosed. If you don't do a blood stick test, you don't know, because the symptoms are so similar to many other things. If you look at ADD, very similar set of symptoms that are associated with lead poisoning as opposed to that malady that affects people as well. So people usually equate it with something else.
Okay. And there's no real way to ever purge that from your body or blood makeup? It's, the reading that I read is really tough to ever get that out.
Depends how quickly you're treated. If we find it early, yes.
Okay.
But if it's ongoing over a period of time, you're most vulnerable between birth and six years of age. And if it's ongoing during that period of time, and it has a chance to pass into the bones and the tissue, that's where it's going to remain in the system for years to come and have the lifelong effects. But if you catch it early enough and you remove the lead hazards, it never goes into the bones.
And then one last thing. In my final, I wrote up on this quite a bit a few years back, even painting over that could help as far as chipping windows. A lot of people don't realize that just actually painting over internally in your house could actually help from the dust, correct?
That is one of the methods we use.
That's what I just don't get, why more people don't know, I just want to.
We use two methods. One is abatement, full abatement, that would be replacing or removing the hazard completely. But there's also something called interim controls, which could, which could involve painting and paint stabilizing a surface so it doesn't create the opportunity for exposure. But the fact is, lead remains in the home, it's just safe for the residents of the home if you address it in that manner.
Right, okay. I'll have to catch up with a copy sometime.
Absolutely. Look forward to it.
Additional comments, Doc, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. Do you have more applicants for lead removal, lead abatement than you have money? Is there a waiting list?
Yes. A lot of that is driven, those applicants are driven, driven by our marketing. And we do a lot of marketing, whether it's on the radio, which is not necessarily as successful as, as direct marketing. When we do mailers to Section 8 voucher program homes, these are homes that qualify for Erie Metro Housing Authority funds through HUD, they automatically qualify for our program because the tenants qualify by income, and it's already been verified. So quarterly, we do targeted mailings to the owners of these properties, making them aware that these funds are available. And not only does it benefit the residents, but in many cases, you've got new windows, you've got new doors. Some, and sometimes if we've got match money like we do now from the Dorn Foundation, we can re-sign the whole property. So from start to finish, the property may look drastically improved. I know that's kind of a perspective thing, what you think is beautiful, others, someone else might not think is beautiful, but empirically, the improvements are made that are going to make the, the home safer and protect it from other hazards like leaks and other intrusion of water which can lead to damage within the home.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I know we've been at this for a while, I just want to say we really appreciate the partnership, the work you do is so incredibly important in saving kids from, you know, future of despair and reduced, reduced earnings, and, and oftentimes, it leads to higher incarceration rates with the lead poisoning. But while you have the podium, if you might just spend a moment to make sure the public understands, we've knocked on the door, but what's the profile of a home that's likely to have lead paint, age, cracking, paint dusk? Can you just explain that to the public so people know? Because these aren't just rental properties, these are homeowners, owner occupied properties too. But just explain to people what that profile is, please.
Typically, it's a home that's somewhat deteriorated. From the exterior, you will, you could see peeling paint, but you might not see peeling paint. Typically, it's a home that has original windows that are, they aren't the new vinyl windows that have already been replaced at some point in the history of the home. The federal government in 1978 actually defined that as the year that lead could no longer be used in residential homes. It could be used in commercial practices, but no longer could they use it in homes throughout the United States. So that's kind of a dividing line, but I can tell you, most of the homes are But I can tell you, most of the homes are probably, that we find lead in, are probably 1965 and back. And you can run a curve on this. The homes that were constructed in 1965, 25% of them are going to have lead hazards that are a threat. Fifty-five, 50% of the homes, 1920 and prior, and 100% of the homes that are century homes that are in deteriorated condition. So, that's kind of the profile. I mean, it's, every house looks different. But it's usually those homes where they, they don't do that ongoing maintenance, repainting your garage, repainting the side of your house. And really, what we really need to do if we want to have a long-term impact is insulate it inside it with vinyl siding, stabilize the paint, then go over it so that paint never has a chance to make it into the soil where the kids inevitably are going to find it because it tastes great. It tastes like sugar.
Mr. England, it occurs to me that your Health Department's been very successful in getting grants. A million here, eight hundred thousand there. That's terrific, but it's never enough, is it?
Nope.
Really, you are, thank you for what you're doing. It is invaluable, but it is still the tip of the iceberg as far as eradicating this problem.
Well, I've got a reason. I've got a reason to come to work every day because the work is never done.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just one. I have asked the Planning Commission, as they're looking over our rules and regulations, to consider approaching some way to bring lead abatement into our rules and regulations. I see no reason, with money available to fix it, that we would be having Airbnbs, these changeovers that we wouldn't expect that they would bring the houses up to some code. So hopefully, we can do something with that. The lawyer will have to tell us where our hands are tied. But I think we should be doing something to encourage it.
Thank you, Mr. England. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. I'm actually going to leave some information. I'll probably leave it with Eric. And it's.
Kathleen will take that.
Yes. Perfect opportunity to apply right here on the sheet.
Commissioner, before you, several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation and a motion to accept these communications.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Objection motion be approved. No objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have three items on our consent agenda this evening. Does any of you wish to move those items to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I'd like to have Item A. I have a couple of questions.
Item A will go to the top of the list on the regular agenda. Mr. Myers, will you present the consent agenda less Item A?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, land bank sale of 1806 and 1808 Harrison Street properties. And Item B, 1502 Hayes Avenue Project temporary easement.
Commissioners, have you heard these ordinances? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Myers.
I move that we adopt Ordinance B and C into the city charter in full accordance with Section 14.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Ordinances B and C are passed. We'll now turn to our regular agenda. And Mr. Myers, you present formerly the consent agenda, Item A.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $500,000 from the United States Environmental Protection Agency through the fiscal year 2022 Brownfield Assessment Grant Program, authorizing the city manager to execute and grant agreements and to expend the funds consistent with the grant agreement and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I guess I'd like to ask the city manager, when I read online when I was going through this, it says the city will target Brownfield sites for downtown waterfront areas.
Mr. Waddington, we need a motion. We need a motion.
Oh, first.
We need a motion and a second. We'll get to discussion.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. A motion and a second discussion, Mr. Waddington.
All right. Reading through this, it says the city will target the Brownfield sites in the downtown waterfront area. But then it says on the second line, however, the grant funds can be used to access public and private sites throughout the city. Any areas given? Now, do we have any idea? Like, do we have? Because this was just awarded May 12th, correct?
Yes.
So it's like two weeks, two days.
So, through the Commission President, Commissioner Waddington, I'd be deferential to Director Holliday on this. But I know we went through an internal process where I identified sites. And you want to get into what some of those waterfront sites are? And then, any other priorities?
Yes. Through the Commissioner Brady to Commissioner Waddington, the city of Ohio has an Ohio Brownfield inventory database. And we have a waterfront property here in the city, the Deepwater Marina property that's on that database. So, the grant program required us to identify a target area. And that was a natural area to look at. And the EPA viewed that very favorably and ultimately awarded us the grant. So, we're in discussions with the property owner at that location. Our application also identified the Cole Docks property, which the city owns, the two smaller Cole Docks. And I think there may be some opportunity for additional testing at that location. But the grant is able to be used throughout the entire city. So we're going to look for opportunities along that waterfront area to do additional testing. But can work on sites throughout the city. And to answer the question that the resident raised, I do anticipate bringing together a Brownfield committee like we had in the past. We haven't gotten to the point where we're formulating who exactly will be on that. But I think that was, seems like a good practice that the city had in the past. And I'd like to bring that back and anticipate that those meetings will be open to the public.
Mr. Holliday, I would presume when you talk about forming a committee for that, you're talking about not just staff, but residents, committee also.
Correct. Residents. I believe also, real estate professionals were involved in the past. Local brokers that are familiar with the real estate industry and some of the property owners. Really, I'm open to anyone that has a particular interest in this issue. And we can certainly, I'll talk to folks that are interested in serving on that committee.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman. What other, do we have a list for the rest of the city? I'd like to know all the places in the city that we have an opportunity to do this. Does that exist?
In terms of a list, I know the Ohio, the state of Ohio has their inventory and we can provide you with that. I'm not aware off the top of my head if there, that there are any other properties in the city. But we can certainly find that out and get that for you, Commissioner Poole.
So the portion about written in here that other parts of the city could be used, you really haven't identified any place other than downtown? Is that it?
Nothing specifically. But the Brownfields program is really a great opportunity to help at any site that has the potential to be contaminated or the suspicion of contamination. Certainly, it's a great tool to use for, to spur the redevelopment of a site. So, former gas stations, for example, former industrial properties, these are really great opportunities to get that assessment done, find out what the environmental condition of the property is, and then position that property to be redeveloped.
So perhaps a gas station on Washington Street, the old Shell station there at Fulton in Washington, that would come under, that would be allowed under this?
We could certainly take a look at that. Absolutely.
Okay. The last Brownfields committee we had in addition to the things you said, folks that actually knew something about Brownfields because they chaired it. I mean, so that it has some direction and takes us someplace. I actually served on it. So I do recall how it went. So it's very good. Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner? Mr. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Myers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 1 Administrative Code, Title V Officers and Departments, Chapter 145 Employee Provisions of the codified ordinances of the city of Sandusky in the manner and way specifically set forth here and below and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Move for adoption of this ordinance in pursuit of Section 14 of our city's charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, timeout. All right. So, this is going to be addressed to Mr. Poole. When the firefighter contract came up, he's argued all along that we should add a good staffing on fire trucks and police. And the, and four of you, with no discussion, pulled it off the consent agenda. Four of you must have talked about it and met. I heard you talking to Mr. Murray. And the reason you told me is you didn't want Juneteenth in the firefighter contract. You have no discussion about Juneteenth Administrative Code.
We didn't vote yet.
I just looked for discussion. Do you have any?
Yeah, my discussion is.
All right, all right, all right.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to?
Commissioner Poole.
Yeah, you didn't have to ask me. I was going to say it.
Well, I was waiting. I sat there waiting. I thought you were going to jump on it.
No.
All right.
No. Juneteenth is a holiday. I voted to not accept that for the fire department. And to be consistent, I'm going to say no about this. I see no reason to add this holiday. And as much as the administration fought, obviously, since it ended up on the fact finding to prevent the firefighters from having that, it seems not consistent. I'm trying to be nice. Not consistent that they would administratively give themselves that same holiday. So I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Commissioner Poole. And Commissioner Myers. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. My only comment is, and I shared this with Mr. Whoopsir, I know there's a move to maybe allow vacation early on in the tenure of employees to give them additional vacation rather than on the back end, kind of on a sliding scale. And my only comment was, when I was with the county, you know, we had an older staff. And we got to the point where everybody had four or five weeks vacation. It was difficult to find people to work during the major holidays. So, but we discussed it. And I think he'll be able to address that moving forward.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Mr. Myers, you call the role on the motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler? Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Chapter 1519 Fireworks of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky to allow the discharge, ignition, and explosion of fireworks on certain days and times and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
The, I think I asked, we are on item, amended item two, fireworks chapter?
Amendment to fireworks, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I make sure I'm in, in line. I asked why we limited this to three, uh, three days. And the answer I was given was because the committee decided it and I find that not satisfactory. So can somebody elaborate? When the states recognize ten, ten holidays, that we've only, we reduced it to three?
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Unless I misinterpreted it.
I, I don't know about any committee. What I can say is like, looking, looking at the ordinance, it allows it on five days, basically, basically Memorial Day, the fourth, the third, fourth, and fifth of July, and then on New Year's Eve, uh, with a midnight cutoff. And, you know, I think we've all received a lot of complaints from residents about the discharge of fireworks in the city. Um, it has a detrimental effect on young children and, um, older folks and pets, and a lot of it's being abused, it's being, you know, right next to another home and people aren't, can't sleep at night and, uh, people work all sorts of shifts and it's been a problem. So I support the legislation generally because I think this is what our constituents have asked us to do.
I, I think to use the word committee is perhaps a misnomer. I, I believe Commissioner Bajali attended a, a meeting with staff regarding this. I think other Commissioners were invited also, but I, I think we, we were the only two Commissioners there. They asked our opinion of narrowing down the state's, uh, the state's law to, to a number that was more palatable, we thought, to our constituents. I think even in that meeting, we had somewhat of a diverse opinion, but I think that we were okay with, with providing this legislation for your consideration. Certainly, no one is trying to spoon-feed you these dates, but this is, we asked them to present legislation that represented what was the outgrowth of that very informal meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is, I mean, does anyone else have to speak? I'm sorry, I'll wait.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to mention that, yeah, my recollection is all the Commissioners who are invited to, to attend and if we need be at different times. I think Commissioner Harris was there also.
You're right, Commissioner.
And the police, they were there, and the law department. And what we were trying to do is strike a balance. We were trying to strike a compromise so that we could allow fireworks up to a certain point on certain days and then maybe restrict it back to the way it was. You had the option to do either or, so I think that's, that was our recommendation.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I'd like to second, Ms. Bajali said that we were all invited to have input. I reserved my input because I know no matter what we do, pass as an ordinance or put in the charter, Chief Oliver is not gonna be able to implement it. It's just out of hand. One, I mean, Mr. Murray left out post-traumatic stress, the pets. If you look at the state of Ohio from Google Earth, it's mostly rural. Those are the folks out there that are, can go out in their field and shoot fireworks off. Our houses in Sandusky are right on top of each other. The noise, we have noise-oiding ordinances, we have a litter ordinance, the, the litter and the fireworks is, is all over, burning debris falling in everybody's yards, nobody's cleaning it up. So I don't know how we enforce this law, but I, I thank Mr. Bajali for trying. I did not get on that committee because I knew the challenges, no matter what the outcome was of that committee, that's.
Mr. Chairman, just to respond to Mr. Meinzler, I, when, when we talked with the police chief, he indicated that, yeah, it would be very difficult to enforce, but past midnight-
Yeah.
They had a better, they were better able to try and enforce it. I don't know if you're ever gonna be able to enforce it.
That's great, yeah.
But that, I think that was our thinking and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, through you, Commissioner President, to the rest of the Commissioners, it'll be trying to enforce and it has been for many, many years, but yes, normally after midnight, we, we have more of a capability of, because in all honesty, most of the parties are, are complete by that time. Most of the fireworks have probably been used up by that time, but, I mean, we work with the best we can. We go over and have conversations with homeowners if we have to issue warnings. And I, I just felt, I, I know you guys are gonna hear either way from the constituents because I do too, absolutely, but I, I thought this might strike some sort of middle ground that, that maybe we can at least adjust accordingly if need be. So.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Wanted to say, just speak briefly to the, all of us were invited to the committee. By law, only three of us can speak, which is why all of us weren't there. So projecting that somehow or another that somebody just could have spoken and didn't, that's not accurate. You can only have three at a time, three people. We can't pick, we can't talk, we can't deliberate. I just want to make, make that clear. It's not like I-
That's correct, but they, they were more than willing to meet several times to accommodate that. Commissioner Waddington originally was going to attend and he recused himself so Commissioner Harris could attend. He was accommodating to him.
That's my point. That's why, that's, that's my point.
It didn't eliminate Commissioner Waddington from, from attending a second, a second meeting.
The meetings weren't on the calendar. It's not like folks knew when you met. Also, I did communicate with, with, with the Law Director what my thoughts were on this, so.
Good.
And that's not the problem, that's not the issue.
Correct.
Uh, and there actually are, in addition to our five days, another seven, so that makes 12 when you add, add it up that the state has approved Chinese New Year's, Diwali, multiple other celebrating days of differing cultures. And Juneteenth is one of those and I would just as soon not be legislated as a criminal because I wanna celebrate a day that's important, one way or another. It's as simple as that. And this is, I don't know, a nicer way to say it, folks. If you think Chinese New Year's is something that nobody Chinese hears is going, is going to celebrate, then it's not a problem. There's no reason for you to restrict it. I would suggest that, let me just leave it at that, I've made my point. You, you restricted this and, and made, uh, your culture is wonderful, the rest of us should just figure out a different way to celebrate. And I think it's time somebody said something about that.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
This is a first reading. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Erie County Board of Health for Environmental Services to be provided by city employees and reimbursed utilizing Healthy Home Production Grant Funds.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bell.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under, or in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Um, point of order, if this is item three, might it need to be not Section 14? I believe it's a first reading.
It'd be a first reading.
I didn't know if Commission decided to, purview was to change that or not.
First reading. We'll, we'll leave that as first reading?
Yeah.
Well, if that motion presented as first reading?
Yes.
And we have a second for that?
Second.
Now we have a discussion. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed on first read. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Erie County Board of Health for utilizing Ohio-led Safe Home Funds for the demolition of six condemned residential structures in the city of Sandusky and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for Mr. England. I, I didn't realize you could use these funds for demolition.
Yeah, I, I checked into it with the state and they're in favor of it because of the age of the home and the other concerns associated with the structure and its deteriorated state.
Okay, well, I'm glad you can. And in the future, maybe we can do more on the demolition front. And, and I'll just echo some of the other comments up here. We appreciate the Health Department and you being willing to work with the city on these programs.
Jeff Hayes is actually our point person for this program. He's the guy to talk to and he'll, he'll help you with that, with all the properties that you can send our way.
Okay. Four houses and two garages, I believe, we're tackling this.
Correct.
Or, it's terrific, terrific. Thank you both. Additional comments, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed repealing Resolution 031-22R and declaring the necessity for the city of Sandusky, Ohio to proceed with the proposed 2022 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, East Water Street Public Parking Lot Improvement Project, approving the revised specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
Okay. I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the next item on the agenda.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Smith Paving and Exclating Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Shoreline Park Erosion Control and Paper District Marina Walkway Rehabilitation Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the City's Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, you have a hope for, second time around, it's gonna be successful?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This project, we're, we're finishing the shoreline on the Western Finger at Shoreline Park with concrete and we are going to be eliminating the joint that is becoming displaced on the south side of the, the marina. So we're, we're also going to correct an error that I had on the Shoreline Drive project and, and add a, maybe 10-foot section of concrete that connects the sidewalk up the western side of the marina to make sure that you can, you don't have to go into the driveway to get up into the marina, so.
Should be noted that that's the first error that Mr. Klein has made since he's been employed.
(laughing).
And that he's admitted to.
(laughing). Not just since he's been employed, just to be clear, that's, uh, much longer.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? I'm pleased that the bids were low enough that we could add those alternates without, without having good bids. We, we would have probably had to, had to eliminate those, so that, that's good news. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the next item on the agenda.
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone parcel number 57-04215.000 located at 709 Perry Street from RF2 Two Family Residential District to RRB Residential Business District and declaring this ordinance shall take effect under the suspension of rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I, uh, moved that we adopt this ordinance, uh, under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I, uh, although I moved to adapt it, I, I, I trust Erin's judgment. She's always done a great job in, in planning and, uh, and vetting out homes. I, I have to apologize, I did not watch the planning meeting and I did not watch zoning, so I, I would probably need to catch up. This may be a grand home in a block that's a residential. 709 tells me it's on the west side, south of Monroe, maybe a couple houses, a few blocks. I, I'd like to see us, uh, table this. I, I'm, I'm gonna lean with Mr. Bajali right now and vote no. I, I'd like to have a little more discussion about this and how we're gonna go forward and what the, what the planning commissioner, who's, who's gonna write the rules and the, the parameters that we go forward with. I just hate to single out this person right here, this home, but I just feel like I, I might need some more information before we keep doing this.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
No.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
No.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
No.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
No.
That ordinance is passed. Uh, under Section 13, it will take 30 days to take effect?
That's correct.
But it will not come back for another reading?
It will not.
Thank you. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Bird Rides Incorporated of West Hollywood, California, for the use of public space for a scooter rental business and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Blair, we did have a question regarding how these scooters are going to be handled as far as them being dropped off at a variety of sites.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady. So a few things on that question. We have a live dashboard when we'll be working with Bird to track the placement of all the scooters that are in the city. We also have the ability to create no parking zones, so the thing will just beep and you can't leave in a specific areas, slow zones that will force them to slow down, and no ride, riding zones, so a geo fence. And we can do that and set different places within a 24-hour notice. Also, they contract with a local operator who's on call 24/7. They pick them up every night, charge them, they replace them every morning. We are gonna be sure to arrange that some of these vehicles are placed in the neighborhoods, so we see them as a transportation option, not just a joyriding option. Um, and certainly if there's any complaints of a specific vehicle being left in inappropriate place, a non-user actually can ask, access the app, so even if you're not logged in, they don't have your credit card information, information, you're not a user, you can use the app to say, hey, this bird is in the wrong place, take a picture of it and send it to Bird. And that goes, is all through the same system and that would contact the local operator whose job it is to go out and get it, pick it up, and put it where it's supposed to be.
A lot of controls. So with this live dashboard concept, you, you, we know where all 75 of them are at at.
Correct, correct. And they're liable for the vehicles and if they end up in the wrong place, to put them back where they're supposed to be. They, it's interesting to see the arc of how this company has changed their operations. So several years ago, when they first were new, they came in and kind of dropped them off in cities, which caused a varied amount of reactions in places and some public works departments loading them all up and taking them away. And then a number of cities have worked to create legislation and, uh, Bird, they changed their model and listened and they have a small city model that they've used in a number of cities. So they're in Canton, Cleveland Heights, Euclid, Van Wert, Dublin, Ohio, so there's, there's a lot of smaller places and this is what they're using here is the small cities model. They also, it's interesting, I, before I came to the city of Sandusky, and I, I worked on the statewide bicycle pedestrian plan for the state of Ohio with ODOT and I got to work on, we were the leader of the new mobility piece of that statewide legislative document. And one of the best practices that that document encourages cities to do is make sure that you can track the data. And we have that in our agreement with Bird. We can track the data of all the trips, where people, where the vehicles are being used, how often, how many, and that can help us with transportation planning as well, to continue, to advance being a multimodal city with all modes of transportation being safe and, and easy to use.[1545.65] being a multimodal city with all modes of transportation being safe and easy to use.
I would say that we're going to know how successful this program is very quickly, aren't we?
Yes.
Wow, interesting. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I just want to ask, Ms. Blair, if I understand it correctly, then let's say someone leaves it in the middle of the Sandusky Bay pathway, which would be an inappropriate location, are they financially penalized, the user, if they leave it there? How does that work?
They are able to create financial incentives to incentivize people to park them correctly, so you can get a discount if you put it where they want you to put it, so we can designate some parking zones. I don't know the answer if there's a penalty for users if they inappropriately park a vehicle.
If I may, Commissioner President, through you, there is not a financial penalty for the user unless the user violates a traffic law, so like they'd have to get a ticket. There is a potential financial penalty for Bird if they do not comply with the terms of the agreement, or so in an instance where we notify them that they have a bike, or sorry, a scooter in an inappropriate location, and they don't remove it within promptly or at some set of time, there's a $500 penalty for their violations of our contract with them that we can assess to Bird. The users themselves, one, a little harder to police unless you catch them in the act, and two, Bird has enough controls that they should be able to stop parking that in an inappropriate place. Like you shouldn't be able to leave it there through the controls, and so Bird would be the control, the entity that we would try to deal with that through with a financial penalty.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I just wanted to ask, Ms. Blair, are these scooters only during the warmer months, or will they be out year round?
Through the chair to Commissioner Bajali, they are intended to be only through the warmer months. They will pick them up during any snow event, they won't be out during any snow event. It's not specifically, you know, March to November. It's stated in the MOU warmer months, so they can reflect, because sometimes it's really nice all the way through November. But yes, they are not, they are not to be in the public rideaway during a snow or ice event.
Excellent. Mr. Myers, will you call a role in that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Myers, you present item number nine.
It is requested a resolution be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to file an application with the Ohio Department of Public Safety for funding through the American Rescue Plan Act First Responder Wellness Recruitment, Retention, and Resiliency Grant Program for the Sandusky Fire Department and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Chief, what can you tell us about this?
The timeframe for which this grant takes place is actually from where they consider you eligible is from January of 2020 to March of 2021. So at that point, we were without a fire chief and we were down one firefighter. Although we were actively replacing people as they retired or left, that still put us in a position to be down by that March deadline for which this grant qualifies. So this grant allows us to bring ourselves back up to pre-pandemic levels or above. They've taken into consideration that chances are you would have probably increased your staff by a certain percentage. So that allows us to apply for up to three firefighters that we're eligible for to fund. So the object behind this is to apply for three firefighters for 2023 and 2024. And one of the other things we're eligible for is physicals and wellness evaluations, which we haven't had since 2016 because of some mandatory reporting issues that went with it. This grant says that there is no reporting issues from the clinician that these take place, so that won't be a contractual issue if we were to get awarded these physicals. That's something that the Health and Safety Committee of the Fire Department has talked about reinstituting, and this is a way to kind of help fund that and then move forward, past 2024 with a budget option, hopefully.
Fund it for two years, three firefighters for two years.
Yes. Yes.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Mr. Myers, will you call a role in that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Mr. Myers, you present item number 10, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a U.S. Cargo Explorer Ranger trailer from Gingrich Trailer Sales, LTD, of Millersburg, Ohio, for the Sandusky Fire Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I would move to approve this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Chief, we're getting a new trailer.
Well, actually, the county's taken all of their equipment off of ours, and this is kind of like one of our only options, I think.
Either that or you throw it in the back of your car and go on. Not an option. Excellent. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner? Mr. Myers, will you call a role in that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Myers, you present item number 11, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed to approve current replacement pages to the Sandusky codified ordinances and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I move for the adoption, immediate adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Myers, I presume this is something we have to do every once in a while to get things up to date?
Every year.
And we don't expect you to do that.
Yeah.
Well, some of us may, but I do not. Would you call a role in that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Myers, you present our last item, item number 12.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the upgraded subscription license for SOFOs, Full Guard Plus for fire wall security, and Intercept X with EDR for endpoint protection, and a managed threat response solution from Selectus Consulting LLC of Marysville, Ohio, through the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I move for the adoption, immediate adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
With the good comes the bad when it comes to the Internet and our ability, increased ability to do all sorts of things on a faster basis. It also means that the crooks can get us on a faster basis and more efficient basis. In cities like ours, who have not taken proactive steps, and I appreciate what Mr. Ronnie's bringing to us, have not taken proactive steps to protect themselves, have really seen that they basically left the doors open and unlocked, and the criminals can come right in. So I'm appreciative of your ongoing efforts and a great tradition in our IT department over the last couple of years to make sure that our data and systems are protected in operations, and I do support this kind of legislation and this particular piece. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I've always been an admirer of Mr. Whoopsir's economic development skills, but I'm really impressed now that he knows that Intercept X with EDR for endpoint protection and managed threat response solution. I told Cody we needed to look into that right away, so.
Yeah, Mr. Whoopsir was the spearhead of that.
Says authorized the city manager, you know.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I would note that the memo says "to Mr. Whoopsir."
Not authored by.
It's critical, small but important distinction.
Mr. Ronnie, I'm going to presume that we are not, we're not closing the barn door after the horse is stolen, that we're, we have the horse still in the barn, I'm going to presume. And if I understand this correctly, the majority of these dollars, we're literally paying someone to sit there and monitor our system.
Through you, Mr. President, that's correct. It's a 24-hour monitoring system, so it is just nonstop. They will analyze threats, they will do threat hunting, so when, you know, I'm sleeping 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, or even the weekends, they're always on it nonstop. And then they have the authority also to isolate a node within the city, to completely shut it down, then allow me to have the privilege to access it later on and assess the damage if there was any.
And that threat is certainly heightened in this, in this environment that we're in with the Russia-Ukraine thing?
Yeah, it certainly is. Since February 2022, there's been, government agencies have been warned that it's more of a Shields Up initiative, is what they call it, that response is a lot higher through cybersecurity. And for us right now, I'm seeing our firewall attacked at least every second, and I'm not even exaggerating that. It's almost every second on the second, a lot of it from Russia, some, you know, other nations as well. But we are actively being attacked even right now as I'm sitting here sniffing, trying to get into the system.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
I believe I was attacked by poopy, correct?
You were not attacked by poopy, no.
I thought I was when they took me 20 times again. Four in the morning's a good time.
Oh my. Thank you, Mr. Ronnie. That's for all. Mr. Myers, will you quickly call a role in that motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance. Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We will now turn to Mr. Whoopsir.
Thank you, Commissioner President Brady, commissioners, audience, and staff, starting with police. Just a reminder that our community impact officers are hosting two Bike with the Blue events this month, monthly events, an opportunity to go on a bicycle ride with our officers to either Cubs or Dairy Frost for ice cream will take place on June 16th and June 21st. Just another event in a, you know, Chief Oliver sent an update to a few of our commissioners that inquired all of the different community-related work that our police department is doing. And as you know, we've been recently named the agency of the, is it the month?
It's the agency of the month.
The agency of the month, and it's just so impressive, the work that has gone into building up community policing in Sandusky over the last, you know, eight to 10 years. And Chief Oliver's continued that trend, and I'm just very proud of that work. So with the finance department, the next finance committee meeting will be on Friday, June 24th, 2022, at 8:00 a.m. at City Hall for public works. A special thanks to Eric Whiteman and local Boy Scout Troop Number Eight for volunteering to replace flags at veterans' grave sites at Oakland Cemetery prior to Memorial Day. Also, the 2021 water quality report has been distributed. Big Island Water Works continues to meet and exceed all established drinking water standards. Please refer, please refer to the city's website for more information. Also, we are currently hiring for many seasonal and full-time positions. Applications are available at www.cityofsandusky.com/jobs. For community development, the city's COVID-related mortgage and rental assistance program is being administered by the Community Action Commission of Erie hereon in Richland County, has assisted 22 households with mortgage payments totaling $33,000, and five households with rent payments totaling over $11,000. Sandusky residents interested in applying for assistance can visit www.cacehr.org or obtain an application at Sandusky City Hall. And finally, another project that I'm very excited about, that the Lang Trust of the Sandusky Library worked with planning public works and parks to assist the artist Jersey, pronounced Yerzy, Kudzora, and his team to install a series of balancing sculptures in the city originating in Poland, which explains my difficulty pronouncing the name. The sculptures traveled to Sandusky from Columbus and previously from New York City. The sculptures will be in place until October. Locations include Washington Park, Shoreline Park, Lions Park, and the Follett House Museum. On behalf of the Public Arts Commission, we extend our gratitude to the Lang Trust for bringing this art to the city. They've been a huge supporter of public art in the city. A map will be created so the community can identify and enjoy all the sculptures. And I know, I don't know if it's been up yet, but the Register was working on a story, but it's kind of neat to have these been up for the last week, because I cannot tell you how many people are like finding them on their own and being like, what in the heck is that? But people love, this is, of all the great public art things we've done, this is the one that seems to have really captured excitement among members of the community, is they kind of stumble into them and really think they're cool. So, you know, I think it's neat, my kids think it's neat, and so thank you to everybody internally in Lang Trust for being involved in that, and look forward to the community knowing more about it and people getting out and seeing them soon. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions or take comments from the commission.
Questions for the city manager, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Not so much a question for Mr. Whoopsir, but for Chief Oliver. I mean, congratulations on receiving the award. I know there's a lot of new energy in Cleveland as well, and they're talking about getting out of their cars and community policing. And, you know, we've been, our, Sandusky Police Department has been so far ahead of that for, for so many years. I wonder if, Chief, you could share a little bit of what the good work is that your officers have been doing recently, because you shared the numbers with me, and I didn't realize quite how, how much it was, and appreciate it.
Absolutely. Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Murray. I saw the article that Cleveland PD, that you're referencing, now they're, they're starting their community policing initiatives, at least through their new mayor's office, and what they're going to look like. And some of those are, the stressing on getting out of the car and just walking around the neighborhood, that's stuff that's gone on at Sandusky PD since before my time. My predecessor enacted that, and we've sort of evolved since then. I mean, we do so many neighborhood walks and park walks, and you were asking a couple of questions, those numbers. I just ran the numbers since April 1st, and we have over 570 park walks. We have 180 business checks, we have 110 neighborhood walks, and that's just our officers, not just our community impact officers, our officers on patrol, stopping, getting out of the car, playing basketball. We hand out basketballs, we hand out footballs. Our community impact officers came up with a great idea through our other city staff. We're going to give away a bike Thursday on the Bike with the Blue. We're going to give another bike away in a couple weeks at the other Bike with the Blue. So any little thing we can do to forge those relationships with our partners in the community, our business partners, that's what we continue to do. The award that the city manager was referencing is the Ohio Association Chiefs of Police recognized our community policing efforts and actually gave us the agency of the month for June. So that's from the state recognizing the efforts that our officers do every day, not just our community impact officers, all of our officers. And this is going to continue on, and if we find new inventive ways, we're going to, we're going to do that as well.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I want the public to understand how advanced the Sandusky Police Department is in terms of community policing and how long you've been out there building those relationships, and I just want to offer my thanks for that.
If I, if I could just really briefly, just to build on what Chief Oliver said through the commission president to the commission, in addition to that, you know, I know people ask often, like, what are we doing in neighborhoods in Sandusky in addition to the community policing work? We've really expanded our recreation programs, we've really expanded our investments in housing stock in Sandusky. And I bring that up in relation to them being the best police department in the state because my children have participated in recreation programs, not only run by a recreation department, but actually by the community policing division for both football and wrestling that are directly impacting Sandusky kids. And in addition to that, our code compliance, which has increased dramatically over the last several years since the passage of issue eight, when fully staffed, they actually have a code compliance officer who focuses mostly on housing issues and helping execute warrants or helping diffuse issues between neighbors related to housing issues. So they go above and beyond, and oftentimes, when we're looking to flyer for a community event, it's the CIOs that are the ones that get out there and do that citywide. So I'm just, again, you know, the police take a lot of heat, and Chief Oliver, as was Chief Orzecar, is a very modest police chief, but they are really leading the way, not only locally, but I think nationally, on integrating their work into everything that we do, and we should all be really proud of them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? The city manager. Now we'll turn to items of old business. Any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President.
Saturday, I teed it up earlier with Chief Oliver and I guess Mario about the big issue on the west end is the trains. I know it takes, as Mr. Murray said several times, an act of Congress to try to get them to move, but they got timelines and, could you maybe, at the coffee with the commissioner on Saturday, this was really good that you told Mrs. Webster, that was an eye-opener for me. It's the first time I had heard of any backup plan or plan like the Fire Department or Police can do now, that they can get around and reroute through the.
Sure, yes, sir. Through Commissioner President, Commissioner Waddington and the rest of the board. I had the opportunity to walk in with Coffee with Commissioner at 9:00 Saturday morning. At 9:01, I was being asked about trains on the West End of the city. It's an ongoing issue that we have dealt with in law enforcement as long as I can remember. Not just in the West End of the city, it's several different locations in the county as well. There's been recent case law, and it's not really even that recent. It's over the last few years where it is protected federally. The railroads are protected federally, so it does not matter. The state law that used to be where we could issue a ticket and there'd be a $1,000 fine automatically to the railroads, that stopped. Judge Carr, a federal judge in Cleveland, I believe is where he's out of, controls not only Ohio, Michigan, basically the Northeast part of our country, said that's against his definition of the Interstate Commerce Act. So that really changed a lot of things. Everything's been sort of going good on the West End up until when they started changing the way the railroads were coming in and they moved things around at that little impasse. And lately, trains have been blocking the tracks on the West End pretty steadily. We've had many complaints from some of the residents there. I say we because I talked with the fire chief about it as well. But I just wanted to stress to Ms. Webster and everybody else that just because you see a train blocking the tracks doesn't mean we won't do everything we possibly can do to get to where we need to be on the other side of the train. And we've done that. In speaking with the fire chief, we do have access with Norfolk and Southern Police if we, we have numbers that can get trains to move, if we absolutely have to do that in emergency. But if we have to go around the train in different avenues, that's why we have SUVs, that's why we have four-wheel-drive cars, and we've done that. I've done that personally at another intersection. So I think she just really wanted to hear that explanation. And I think some other folks on the West End wanted to hear that explanation too. So that's what we're trying to do. Obviously, the fire chief and I work, dated, you know, hand in hand every day. So if we need to lean on each other, if one of us happens to be on the other side of the tracks and the squad's on the opposite side of the tracks, you know, we're going to work with each other to make sure whatever emergency gets handled properly. I'm sure our previous fire chief was probably dealing with these issues back when he was the chief too. So we'll continue to do the best we can, but the variable in all of this is the railroads, and we don't have much control over that, so.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wadding.
Would it help or maybe ask the logic, if we send maybe Sherrod Brown or Marcy Capper letters that we have a concern? Because they're blocked in at the Lyons Park area. There's no, I don't know how, you know, you, I heard you say, but them folks are blocked in. They're actually trapped. And the other point that I just thought about that you mentioned Saturday, they drive 12 hours wherever they're at, they just stop, their shift's done, correct?
Correct.
I never knew, knew or was aware of that.
And it does not matter where that train stops.
It's better where they're just parked there and they're done, the shift's over.
Mr. Howard, I wonder if you could just draft some type of correspondence to, to both of our federal representatives and share with them what our concerns are and our frustration. From an engineering standpoint, I know that Mr. Klein fires off, probably has a machine that does it, firing off letters to the railroad. And those rarely get a response. And if they do, they're none, you certainly can't understand them. So I think that it's futile to try to deal with the railroad, but perhaps we can lean on our representatives.
We, and through the commission president, to Commissioner Waddington, we can absolutely start working on some draft language to advocate to our, both state and federal representatives on timetables and other things. I know that one of the ways that they dealt with a problematic rail line in the northern part of Cleveland was they basically came to an agreement about when trains would come through the area as much as possible. So it doesn't stop them from using the rail line. And if it causes a problem, it causes, potentially causes a problem. But tried to work on the railroad routing traffic at different times so that it wouldn't be, you know, at the height of the day or other things. And that was done through, I believe, both Senator Brown and Senator Portman's office and as well as like the local congressional representatives. That's great. And if I could, through the commission president to the commissioner, Chief Planner Blair recently found a federal grant, I believe it was, that she passed along. And Public Works took a look, and it looks like it could potentially, we could put together an application to apply for some planning and maybe implementation dollars, depending on where we fall in the, in our timeline of where we're at. But, you know, staff is aware of the issue and taking it really seriously and trying to find any of the resources or whatever it is that we can do. I know Director Klein and the Planning Department are very aware of it and safety's coordinating on it, so we'll keep pushing. We know it's a, it's a real quality of life issue for people that are stuck in between those two sets of tracks.
Sure. Additional items of old business, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I got one more thing, and then I'll be quiet. I'd like to ask Aaron on the Bene Sab, you know, the underpass there, that we cleaned that up probably six, seven weeks ago when we had to clean up, the litter cleanup, and then we went back and swept the stones up and that. That's back, more of the slabs falling off. Mr. Bajali, in the conversation on Saturday when he stopped, we weren't sure if that's a city problem, which I don't think it is. It's got to be a railroad problem as far as the repair, sets and disrepair. I'm not an engineer, I'm not claiming, but some big chunks have been coming off, you know, on the sidewalk area there.
Yeah, through the commission president, we're not allowed to do any construction on those abutment walls. We're not allowed to do any work on any of the structure itself. So anything that supports that railroad, we're not allowed to do. Even the vertical columns that are really within the asphalt pavement, we're not allowed to touch those. We do receive a report every year from an inspection that's done on that and every railroad overpass in the city. And rarely is there anything that the railroad will address. The reports usually come back that they're in good shape. So then we have to go and try to push them, and they say, no, the report looks good. So it's, it's a struggle trying to get them to fix things. And I remember when I first got here on the Camp Street Underpass, we said we wanted to coat the steel on that under, on the structure itself. And we were going to put $100,000 towards it or something like that. We're just going to coat it, we're going to have them scrape the rust off of it and then coat it to protect it. And the railroad said, no, if you're going to do it, you have to sandblast it. And they gave us the procedure and process, and it was half a million dollars. So we're not, we weren't even allowed to help this situation. And that's just the way that they've been. The issue that came up previously about Columbus, where the, the rocks were falling on the traffic. I've reached out to the railroad several times and what they, we actually had some guys go out and take some pictures of it, and they told me that we, their response was, stay off of our bridge. It's a safety concern for, if a, if a train comes. So it's, you know, it's one of those things that, that you just keep trying. I'm dealing with ODAD, I'm trying to talk to the inspectors with ODAD, and we're working as best we can to get them to do something. But even the one guy that I spoke with, he said, I'm in Atlanta and I just, I don't have anybody to come take a look. And that was five years ago, so.
Thank you. And if I may, I know that there were some, through the commission president, I know a few meetings ago, I believe it was Commissioner Murray and maybe you, Commissioner Waddington, who asked kind of one of our options. And as Director Klein pointed out, our options are actually, from a legal perspective, are very frustrating and limited. We looked into it, and we also, I believe the city had a memo prepared on this years ago. And it is convoluted, unclear and frustrating, to say the least, as to what our options are. And it really appears to be boiling down to continuing to just pressure external parties or the railroad as much as possible because for what they determine as their property, we really, our hands are pretty tied. It's, it was very frustrating what the results were.
Yet we're expected to sweep up the debris as, once it hits the ground, presumably. Wonderful. Additional items of old business. Items of new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I don't expect a response tonight, but I'm just recalling now, I should have sent an email. But I had a resident who contacted me about possibly having a crosswalk somewhere along Campbell between Perkins and the railroad. And they were observing that children were, you know, with, with the schools being centered the way they are, there are people, there are children crossing that road. And I did realize as I drove it over the weekend, after the person contacted me, that there really aren't any crosswalks in there. So hopefully that's something that we can consider down the road as a maybe safe, a safe route to schools grant or something like that. But it does seem like there's an absence there.
Mr. Klein, hear that? Thank you. I have an item of new business, and I need to ask for a motion to set a public hearing for the June 27th commission meeting for the tax budget.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second discussion. Mr. Myers, you call and roll on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
That public hearing is set for June the 27th on the tax budget. Additional items of new business, commissioners? If not, we will move to public comments on any item that pertains to city business.
I need to back off this. I really do. Tim Schmoger, 362 Sheffield Way. I don't know if anybody's noticed or not, but this past weekend in the 100 block of Columbus Avenue, another big chunk of facade off of somebody's building came tumbling down. Nobody was hurt. But I guess the question would be, does our code enforcement on a routine basis inspect exterior facades of commercial buildings? Because it's becoming a, quite often, I mean, not, not just downtown,